Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Thursday, April 27th meeting of the Board of Directors, Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Could all please rise and face the flag and join me in saluting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, have some words of wisdom for this?
Uh, I don't know if I do or not, but I'll give her try. Lord, please give us the insight and the will to serve our community and do the right things in your name.
Good job. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Director Arden Perry.
Here.
This is Secretary Barbara Boo.
Here.
Secretary Arden Schaper.
Here.
Vice President James Saruman.
President.
Vice President Michael Schaper.
Here. Thank you. Scott, any ceremony or?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public comments? Anyone from the public? This is the time and place to speak on items not on the agenda. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak? See no one, then we'll move to the consent calendar.
Move it.
Mr. President, could I?
Yes, sir. So, um, then we'll poll item three?
The regular dinner. Regular board dinner. Yeah. That's right, item three.
Item, okay, so item three's polled.
Move the balance.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? See no one, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, item three. Alan?
Mr. President, if we could just have our district secretary. Sixty minutes or a little bit to say that on getting the tax let off under the one item that it's not the district getting the tax let off, but the donor would not receive a charitable contribution deduction for tax purposes. And also on the item about that the matter has to be for public purposes, or one of the district's purposes that's being served their task.
Madam Clerk?
Move approval or the change.
Second.
Uh, the motion is second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? It's even, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three carries five to zero. Okay. No public hearings this evening, so general managers report. We've had a request from Director Ooten.
Mr. President, District Clerk mentioned approved item number three, so you need to also approve the consent calendar as well.
We had done that prior to that. He did that, Bob made the motion to do that prior to the number three.
Director Ooten.
There was a motion by Director Ooten, a second vice, a vice secretary. Sorry. And it passed five to zero.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a request from Director Ooten to move item four up, since we have a representative here. Rather than go on misery any longer, we can let him bring that item up, please. So, item four, please, Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, item number four is considering a, I'm sorry, consider a contribution program for the concerts at the park. You actually have three applications on this agenda, and so when you're considering, when you're considering approving these applications, there's a couple of things you need to do. One, you need to establish the purpose that the district is trying to serve by making this contribution, and the purpose must be established as one of the district's statutory powers, or a power that would be incidental to those purposes. So, for example, you know, include properly treating sewage, preventing SOs, recycling, et cetera. And the second is that you've got to describe how that contribution will advance that district's purpose. So, you just need to, and I think district council will agree, you need to just make clear that purpose and how to advance that purpose when you make that decision.
Move it through.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I want to find out what the approval is for.
At Concerts at Park, I think we'll have a booth, or have had historically, and we educate the public in how, what we do is a purpose and how we do it. So, you know, we make contact with some of the public.
What amount are you looking at for the approval? Because this is the one that's.
The recommended amount.
The twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
You, what did we spend last year?
That's what we spent, twenty-five hundred, and we get a booth every, every day, or every week, every Tuesday on the concert park, we have a booth there. And so staff is disseminating information about our programs, about recycling and sewer programs, so it's, it's, it's a good event, it's a very good event to get our message out, to get our purpose out.
What are those hours, just from, maybe, Mike?
Yeah, I was gonna, can we, Mr. Carey, would you like to come up to the podium? We may have some questions. Mike Carey's here representing the Community Foundation.
Costa Mesa Foundation.
Clerk.
I think there's only going to be three nights this, this year, is that correct?
Correct, yes, because the Fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, this year there'll only be three events, next year there'll be five, three days in charge.
And then what, what are the normal hours?
I think the concerts start at five thirty and go till seven forty-five.
And then we have a booth that's open before that, is that correct?
Yes.
And what would you, can I keep asking questions?
Go.
What is, what do you think the average daily attendance is for those three nights?
That's a good question. This is my first year on the board. Last year was the most successful. We hired the top band from last year, performing again this year. And I know there were thousands of people there, it was a band, Common Sense.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that on the record still.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
On that, I went to them, and I'll tell you, it's just full. People bring their little tables, they bring everything that they want for eating, and there's trucks there, you know, food trucks if they want, yeah. And it's just wall-to-wall people, plus there's a stage there. Big turnout of people.
And can I ask another question from our staff? Is that, are we busy usually with information? Yes.
Yeah, I, my experience, when I've stopped by the board, there's a lot of people. I think this is one of the events that generates a lot of good publicity for us.
I agree, I just wanted to get that on the record.
And the good publicity, I think, goes back to what we were talking about with Scott. I mean, we're getting our message out, and people are able to benefit from the, from what staff does.
What do you think, Scott, would be our main goal this year? Getting information, what information are we going to be pursuing the most?
I, I still think the organics program is probably a good, a good topic to get out to the public. I think our new CCTV sewer program will also be a good, good idea.
That's good.
I think, you know, HHW programs, our door-to-door collection programs, all our, all our programs, I think, are very worthwhile of getting out there and letting people know what we do.
I think that we justified the amount in our participation, there's some of the needs that we have to justify.
I just had one more comment, that also on that sewer program, they have a little game, and the children love playing, and the parents come over, and we have all kinds of giveaways that we give away, and they get to play this game, trying to put a sandbag through this hole, and this, you know, field competition. And it has a large line of people there, so.
The only exception I would take, Mike, is on the flyer, your marketing person, whoever put together a little paragraph on the right about the delicious food trucks and all that. The one comment that I would take exception with that says, "Face painting art activities for the kids, cool ocean breezes." That probably should be changed to gale force. It gets cold up there.
It's always windy in that hill.
Oh, it's, yeah, even in July, even in July, but, but I agree with Arden, I think we get a lot of, a lot of message out to folks, so.
Okay, I'm finishing my question.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the item? All right, then, we had a motion from Director Ooten, and a second from Secretary Schaper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Sponsorship carries five to zero.
Awesome. This is one of our better sponsorships, I think.
It is a good, yeah. The board want to, want me to convey your, our appreciation for your continued support.
Did they write that for you?
Strongly suggest.
Tom, boy, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good seeing you.
Okay, then we'll do, go back to item one, request from the Costa Mesa Newport Harbor Lions Club, fish fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, another contribution application, and this application, the Costa Mesa Newport Harbor Lions Club is requesting the use of three CMSD generators to help power the event. So, again, before approving this application, please consider what the purpose is and how by donating our generators will that contribute to advance our purpose.
I have a couple of questions. It's good for us to exercise those generators, right? Because they don't get a lot of use.
We exercise them every month.
Do you?
Yeah. But I believe, but I believe in return, I think with the Lions Club, is we get a free booth. So, in return, that, again, another opportunity to promote our programs. And the fish fry is, as you know, is one of the busiest events of the year.
It is.
I think it's the biggest.
It is, excuse me, it is the biggest. Sorry, I shouldn't have said, why, it is the biggest. But I think that's, that's the trade-off. So, by loaning our generators, we get a booth at no charge, and we can promote our programs and get our message out.
Do we man those all three, three days?
We don't, we just do Saturday and Sunday, and we're not all there all day, we're there from noon to about five o'clock, so about five hours.
Is that, what reason do you only have it for those times? Well, it, we go on Saturday, Sunday, it's noon until nine, roughly.
Yes, yeah, so, you know, it.
Kind of dies out at night?
Yeah, well, one, it's, you know, the longer you keep staff there, the more overtime we're paying, and secondly, you know, I don't want to dedicate an entire day for staff to be there, and they've got other things to do, you know, so I want to have an opportunity to do their personal meetings as well.
Do you think that that amount of time is okay for us, in terms of getting the information out?
I believe it is, yeah. Yes, it is.
I believe that someone was just on call, or staff was on call, and then they fueled them, I think, because I think that they want, they want the control of fueling of them.
You don't want us, you don't want the Lions to refuel them, you want your own people to refuel them, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And the, and the, the Lions Club has to go get them and, I think, return them to the yard, so that's not a staff function.
I don't know, I think you guys, does the center?
No, no, they, they will go to the yard and, and they will pick them up and drill them, or so we, so what the result, they'll go to the generator, we walk around the generator and make sure, what it looks, kind of like when you're renting a car, you walk around the generators, see if there's any damages or any nicks, and we mark that down before they take the generators, and then they, they will, whoever's borrowing the generator once tomorrow, they, it's their responsibility to take it off the premises and take it where they need to take it, and they've got to bring it back, and then we do the final inspections to make sure everything's okay.
Has there ever been any damage?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Two quick things that I want to bring up. Under our form, the generator use agreement requirements and procedures, let me do the easy one first, the very last line says that CMSD, the applicant shall provide CMSD endorsement showing that we've added, that CMSD's been added to the general liability policy?
Insurance, yes.
You've never asked for, no one's ever asked that of our club, of the Lions Club.
Okay.
So, would you make a note?
Yes.
I happen to know, because I'm the one that gets the endorsement. Okay? And I just did it for the city and the school district, so that's important that we have that. The other thing that's not in the requirements, I think I'd like you to take a look at, is the applicants need to comply with all city requirements, with the generators as well. I think you need to state that in there. The, the one big thing that the city makes us do, and I'm not even sure you guys are aware of this, we have to put a grounding rod in eighteen.
Copper.
How, eighteen, three feet in the ground or something like that?
A certain distance in the ground.
And that's a fire department requirement. So, just, you might want to add that to your requirements and procedures for the future.
Yeah, so when other, other agencies borrow them, you know, they know what that requirement is.
What if the city does that for their, you know, with their Snoopy House?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, they do. But I think the fact that we have, that the, or the applicants have to do that, I think it needs to be stated in, it's an easy thing, it's just a formality, so. Okay? Other discussion on the item?
I'll make a move, motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion, second, other discussion?
I think we made the case that it's a valid thing for us.
Oh, I, I think historically, it's been shown to, it's, okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item two?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, on, on item number D two, staff is requesting to delay any discussions or action on this item, and if recommendation to defer to item G one, an attorney's report, and allow district council to give you an oral report on the City of San Jose versus Superior Court case, which this is why we brought in item number D two, is because of this case, and so I think it'd be behoove us, if district council gives you background about this case.
Okay, so you want to just hold off on this item?
Yes, you can either go, you go, you can talk about it right now, or you want to get through all the other general reports, and then talk about item G one, or you can do it right now.
Let's go ahead and get through the rest of the general manager's report, so we'll come back, is that okay with you, Ben?
Sure.
Item three, then?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. This is another contribution application, and this is for the Costa Mesa Mayor's Celebration of Arts of Leadership. We have, I think this is the, this will be the fifth year they are sponsoring this program or having this event. The last two years, the district has not participated in this event, the first two years we did, so it's on the agenda again for your consideration, and again, when you're making that decision, if you're gonna, if you want to participate in this program, please identify what the purpose is and how it advances our, our purpose, like making that contribution.
What, what is the contribution that we're getting back from the city? Because I voted no, I think, every year, and we still don't see how it's going to benefit us, because all they, I don't know what they do for us. I don't even know, unless it is as a sponsor.
I'm going to pass this down to Mr. C. Lewis.
I think they, out of the proceeds of, you know, raising money, they donated to different arts programs in the school system, I'm pretty sure. Isn't that what it is?
That, that's what my understanding of it was.
All true, yeah, thank you. I wrote down some findings for us, so that, you know, it could be used if we decide on this. First of all, it's an opportunity to show support and partnership with the city and all our constituents, that we get together with them, and it will strengthen our ties with the local governments, special districts, and educational institutions and businesses in the community by doing something like this, because there'll all be something like this, too. And I've gone before, I think I missed one when I was gone last year, but it's quite worthwhile as far as showing support, and if ever, like, we have reassign meetings, and that gets us together, and then something like this would give us together, too, for leadership, showing that we have leadership in the community, and this will be good public wise, public relational.
At that event, are we allowed to advertise or promote or do anything?
Well, you see in the staff report, which, you know, if we were going to be a bronze sponsor for twenty-five hundred dollars, it lists what you get for that, and a lot of it, it's just our logo on a lot of the events, so maybe we can make a request if we put a logo with a little saying, is, you know, like, don't flush wipes down your toilet or, or, you know, recycle your food scraps, you know, if you put a little, little, you know, message on there, maybe they can do that, and then that would definitely meet our purpose.
Plus, they announce us and say something to us, to balance at the event.
Alan, if, if we, if we participate in things like this, and we're, we're kind of showing support for other agencies and things like that, does that fit any of the categories for, just the fact that we're supporting another group?
We, of course, will defer to your determinations on this, as long as we showed you went through a process to get there and showed how it would advance our purposes. So, if one is a work in determining that it's somehow advancing the purposes of the district, of course, the general is going to give you guidance on that.
Okay. Does that help, Bart? Was that?
Not really, but I know what you're saying, I just don't see what, I mean, I like the council, I like what's happening, but I'm not sure it fits into the category for us to spend that kind of money, even though, you know, I like what's going on.
I, I tend to agree, agree with you, I mean, at the other events that we've approved, we have a booth, we're passing out things, we're, we're showing what we do. At this, we're not really showing what we do.
But like this is almost like free advertising, because you're on websites, you're on Chambers' website, you're on the cities, you're on all the different websites, the city announces all the time on Channel Three, these are the following sponsors for this event, blah, blah, blah. I, you know, I just think, public relational wise, you know, we're showing good support in our city.
That's a good point. Does it get specific as to what organizations benefit?
Yeah. It's on the flyer, it's right on the, I, just, it's art programs at Estancia, Mesa, Soy, Secretum Center, and South Coast Rep.
Anyway, I'd like to try to make a motion to see if it works.
Go.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'd just like to move the approval of having a solar sponsor, is that the word?
Bronze.
Bronze, I'm sorry, the bronze sponsor for the Celebration of the Arts of Leadership on Friday, June ninth, six to eleven, at the Western South Coast Plaza Hotel.
Could you include in your motion?
Sure.
The general manager's recommendation that we ask them, with our logo, to put some kind of phrase?
Sure. That would be included, having a phrase of some sort to give us recognition that who we are and what we stand for.
Do we have any indication of other people that have contributed to this? Other agencies in town that might have contributed to it?
I, I don't know, I'm ahead.
I'm sure Mesa will.
But imagine they would. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, the motion carries three to two, with myself and Director Perry voting no. How do we decide which six get to go to the event?
Well, the three, the three you voted for should go first.
I knew, I knew somebody would say that.
We?
I will be here, so I can.
That's why you voted.
No, 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 I, I just don't. I don't need another meal, believe me.
Maybe we should decide tonight.
What does that entail? Six members of our staff and board members?
Just six.
Six people.
Six. Do we all sit together in a table?
Sure, we do.
How many, so there's a couple of other people that'd be with us?
Yes.
And where's it located? At the?
The Western Hotel.
I thought it was somewhere else. I thought it was at the.
It's at Turnip Rose, isn't it?
No. Western reception. The Western South Coast Plaza.
The other ones, right?
The Western South Coast Plaza.
One of them, one of them was in the Secretum.
Yeah, that's where it is.
Jazzed in.
Oh, yeah, that's right, on the site.
Which one is that?
It's on the site.
The first one.
The Western South Coast Plaza. I don't know the name of that building, it's like Secretum or something.
It's to the, it's to the right of the western edge, you come out of the parking garage.
I'm sure you can figure where we're, where we're, where we're supposed to go, Scott, can you do that?
Yes.
Well, who's all going from there, besides Mike not going?
I'd say wasn't going.
June ninth?
Aren't you? What's the date? June ninth.
June ninth.
I don't believe so. Why don't Madam Clerk send out a email to the board? Poll the board, see if it can. Thank you. Okay, item five?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wendy Davis, have you given this report?
Thank you very much. Before you, you have a staff report that shows that the quarterly budget review through March 31st, and just some of the brief highlights. We're anticipating that the solid waste fund will be under budget by approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We're anticipating that the wastewater fund will be under budget about eighty-seven thousand dollars. The solid waste fund, I'd like to go over a few items there. Staff is anticipating that the hauler line item will be over budget by about twenty-five thousand. This is due to increased occupancy. So, the hauler is per household pickup, and we're anticipating that that will be over budget by the end of the year. The recycling and disposal, we're anticipating to be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over budget, and that is mostly because two years ago, when this budget was created, staff was trying to decide how much would be shifted to organics of the tonnage, and staff didn't do a good job of guessing that, and so we shifted too much to the organics and didn't leave enough in the recycling and disposal line item. So, the organics line item is anticipated to be about two-hundred and thirty thousand under budget. So, net, net, it all balances. We're under budget in total, just by a little tiny bit. What staff is seeing is not as much participation in organics as we anticipated, but tonnage is increasing overall, which is shown by the occupancy increasing. So, our tonnage, when you add the, the organics to the, the regular mixed waste, we're still seeing growth in tonnage. So, we anticipate that the tonnage numbers will continue to grow. We're preparing the budget for the next two-year cycle, and we're budgeting much less in organics and more in recycling. I would also, in the wastewater fund, I'd like to point out that we're over in legal services, that's mainly due to the additional legal litigation work that we've had this year. It's, we've had the Caltrans sued, the regional water quality control sued, some issues with Mesa Water, some, and the election we had in November. So, those are the reasons that we're anticipating that to be over budget. Overall, the solid waste fund, as I said, we're anticipating a small savings, it will probably be more than we're anticipating here, just because we're very conservative, but you have to recall that we adopted a depth of the mixed waste.
Do they have access to make a turn?
We, when they go into design, when they submit the plans to the city, they have a design review meeting, and so when they're going through the checklist of the city, I myself attend the design review and make sure.
They, they, it's really tight, but they can go in and.
That was a concern of ours before I know.
Yes.
So, do they listen to what you say?
Yes, they do. We, we put conditions on it at the meeting or before, and then when the engineer and myself also issue will serve letters to them, saying that we can serve them with these conditions. So, it's, we want that customers to be serviced easily, because that's good for the trash companies, or it's good for the customers as well.
Is there any complex that's been built that we can't make the turn and they have to back out?
You know, oh, backing out is, is common, yeah, there's a lot of places that don't have turns, but it's just a straight back in and back out, and we condition that where the arm is on the right side, so they have to move all their carts to the right side or the left side, and they may back in, but there's a limit to how far they're willing to back and, and stuff, so we factor all of that in.
That's how it's, how many of those are in our district that you have to back out?
How many of those are in our district that you have to back out?
Oh, there's tons of them. It's not, yeah, that's not an unusual feat.
Do they have to have two drivers in those trucks?
No, they don't. What we do is we condition them to put all the carts on one side. And then, you know, we ask the trash company, do you want to back into this unit or pull in? And they'll say, you know, it doesn't matter to us. So we'll say, okay, the best for this is, for the trash guy will back in and then come out.
Well, I think, right, it'd be a hundred and, a hundred and twenty feet long, if that mattered, for the resident, you have to make that truck and...
And then even if they have a turnaround, it doesn't mean that the trash truck can make it through the turnaround. They need a, we were just working on this today. It's like math for me. A thirty-five foot turning radius. So that's like seventy-foot wide circle, apparently.
I mean, look at our building here. If they don't turn around, I mean, they... Back it out.
Do they back up?
They back up into the vacant parking space and pull out. But again, there's, you know, there's no turning radius here.
I mean, they don't back up onto the street?
No, they don't because, but if the parking lot was full, they would have to.
Okay, I had a question. Dealing with the manhole project? Now, I have several calls on this because apparently we do the manhole, but then the cement isn't always done right away. And do we do this jointly with the city? Is that it?
No, we have to...
Right. But what happened was they did, this is College Park area, they did the manhole, you know, we did it. And then after that, the cars were going over, coming home at night. And there was the hole there.
Yes, they don't put the asphalt in.
Because they didn't do that until the next day.
They don't put the asphalt in until the concrete is cured.
Is that us or is that the city?
In fact, I felt this way.
But somebody's...
Yeah, but this is the city. But, yeah, it depends. We do have, right now, we have American Asphalt doing the adjustments for our manholes. And then as well, they're doing adjustments for the city of Newport Beach. And the city of Newport Beach is doing Irvine Avenue from Twenty-third to Isabel. And so we give them the manhole covers and they're repaving and doing that street. So they'll do those adjustments for them, too.
But they were pretty irate about that because they said, we're wrecking our cars. We have to go around, we have to worry, what if we're not seeing? It's getting dark. And I didn't know. And then something came out in the newspaper on that they were delayed from the city on doing the cement part. And I didn't, I thought, well, when I come here, I'll ask what's going on.
Well, if you have, things that are, and that's not supposed to be people that's... If we want a more, I mean, that's like, that's the thing, the children, you know, if it's gone in there, it's...
Okay.
No, it's not.
They won't do that? That's a wise way to go.
They do it. They do it. They do it sometimes. There are some in the city.
There are some that are, you know, there's some all concrete that's, I've given them.
I forget what I was going to say. But it, well, I wanted to give you, it's not cement. It's concrete. Cement is part of the concrete. You don't call a cake flour.
Thank you for that clarification. Enriched all of us, actually.
Oh, never say it different.
Okay, any other questions for Wendy? Receiving five. Thank you. Good job, as always. Okay, item six, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is your quarterly progress report for your strategic plan. And we're coming up on two years on our two thousand fifteen, twenty strategic plan. And as you see, we, staff has pleaded sixteen strategic goals so far, and others are ongoing. Some haven't even started yet, but will be started real soon. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Good report. I like the purple box. I'm stationed in Manhattan. Okay, receiving five?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item seven?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a rewarding idea. Application submitted by Caitlin Tran, our senior accountant. And she submitted an idea of installing solar lightings in our doors, our three doors out here at HQ, to improve lighting and security. Right now, we do use solar lighting in the facilities. We have solar lights for our flag and for our monument sign outside. So we thought this was a good idea. The cost is minimal for purchasing the lights. There's no hookup with Edison and/or improved security. So therefore, staff is recommending the board approve, awarding one hundred dollars to Ms. Caitlin Tran.
There was a second part, too, wasn't there? About a bell ringing or something?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, the other suggestion was installing a bell at the lobby. When staff, when members of the public come to the lobby, sometimes staff doesn't know they're there. So when someone comes to the lobby, the bell will go off. They'll know that they're there and we can provide them service.
Automatically, the bell goes off?
Yes.
It's like a button door. Now, shouldn't this have been two ideas? Should we be rewarding her for two ideas?
It's up to you. If you want to spend another hundred dollars, that's up to you.
No, it's one.
She submitted it as one.
She did, but there's two ideas in there.
They'd have to come to us in a different proposal.
I'm looking for approval of a good idea that she had. The price is fantastic because I have it at my home. It's a lot more than...
Those little, are you going to use those little light frames that stick on?
I think in their attachment, there's, I should attach what they look like. They're good-sized lights.
Because I, I actually bought a couple for my yard and I saw them on Facebook. They're little, they stick right, they're great. And they really light up, so I think it's great. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
I did.
Other discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
You have a question for staff? You brought up the light on the flag. How does that work?
It's great, yeah. Yeah, hopefully, I don't know if it's dark, but yeah, I've seen it when it's dark. It works fine.
Does it stay on all night?
It's adjustable.
Probably goes till about midnight in the morning.
I don't know how long it stays on, but it's...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's lit.
I actually have one on my flight. It's a desert.
Really?
Yeah, it stays on almost all night. Of course, there's a lot more...
Usually there's a motion sensor and then it stays on, you can adjust the time it stays on.
More solar, the better. Okay. And we're gonna...
Go to G one, please.
G one?
Yes.
G one?
Yes.
Good for you?
Sorry.
Sorry, catch you off guard.
Copy that. Well, I'm here to tell you about a new board... About the San... To San Diego District Board, to the county, to the... And the holding is important in order to... That when a government employee uses a personal account to communicate about the conduct of public business, the right may be associated with a public record. Said in another way, you cannot sue a communication from the public without the public's approval. It's considered a non-public record. So that's a limited case. A lot can occur to you if you want to. It's basically a four-part test to see whether or not what you may have of a public record. It's either writing, it doesn't have content related to the conduct of public business, is verified, or only used or seen by the government. And the writing must relate in a specific way to the public's approval. In other words, you can't have a communication, or you can't have a communication about my boss is a juror, or I'm really working a lot over time. And you know, it relates in some way to your life, which is a public record. On the other hand, it's usually, you know, my boss is a juror. Records could do something illegal if that were the public record. It's retained by the agency, even though the employee puts it in his personal account. It's sort of a moment of creation test, namely, whenever it comes about, that's when you determine whether it's a public record or not. This will have an impact on whether or not we need to have a record retention fee, even on matters that might be on your personal account. That's to be determined still. The current thought is that that may apply. As you know, Government Code Section sixty-two hundred makes it a felony to destroy a public record, so we want to be careful about that. The court will find that you have construction protection if you have the right and control of the records directly to see another person. So therefore, your outside third-party vendors and contractors may have records related to public business that's actually a public record, even though you don't have any within the building or the premises here. The court has said, never we should do actual issue of whether or not the agency can tell us what it has in a specific way, and just to explain the purpose of it. Instead, what the court did, they began off on what would be a reasonable search to determine if there is a public record. The good news in that regard is that there's not a requirement in time of increase of search. In other words, you know, there's no smart phone, there's no security, in fact, we're going to, we're going to screen our records to search. It's only, it would be a good category to search to rotate the function of documents. And of course, they don't allow and push things from a person who owns the device to do the search as long as they've been trained about what a public record is. And that's part of why we're trying to talk to you about this. How do we comply? As to requests for records in non-governmental accounts, our first step... And you assume that the Nolani did request for the general person to have the request. We can make the request when the person has the rights. We provide the communications we have funded by the entity that we're checking. So then, you would be, your job is to go on the phone if you were being a person that tries to look for that kind of record. And of course, they didn't exactly hold that you could use some of these procedures, but they looked, certainly looking at these procedures from federal case law and from the state of Washington, which had, has a law about this. And what they said was that you could prepare a twin bond list, which is a, they put an index of documents that you have, that you might want to knock over. And you can assert various privileges about why not, like privacy or the delivery of your process privilege. And they asked the company to just bring over to the party discussing it, if you do not have the document, it's clear, you know, like this public record. And there's a file of that, and you're not a proper, a proper statement of privilege. Personal information can be redacted with a same-time explanation on the bond list. And the court has said that they're only going to address privacy concerns on a case-by-case basis. It's a balancing test, so there's no one-size-fits-all determination of this. All of this is leading to what your general manager and left-of-the- your staff is going to be recommending to you, which is that we come up with a policy and some procedures that will assist you in complying and not being caught with having to disclose something you don't want to disclose. And some of the things you might want to think about is limitations on the use of personal devices, devices or accounts, employee training on what is and is not a public record. Acquiring, these can be all of these or some of these may alternative. Require that all business communications be on government devices or accounts. Provide agency devices and accounts to employees. I talked about that. Or require that all businesses be CC'd from private devices to public devices. There's actually federal law that says that in certain agencies they have to do it. Seems kind of cumbersome. And then have an agency personnel sign a form stating that all agency devices are certifiable, that they are taking things that are disposable. Outline an affidavit to see if, or if you say how this would work, and your person or device is working. And they put it down low and they establish a retention policy. So those are some of the outlines of what the court said. What you have to understand is that this was not a final decision. It was a decision in which the first holding that I told you that it may be a public record, that was the end result. The court sent it back to the trial court to say, sort this out. And then if it goes further, then maybe it'll come back up on appeal. But that's the only thing we have to work with right now. But they were very helpful in giving us some ways that they might accept to comply with this law. And the best news, I think, is that they're going to allow, in the first instance, you'll look at your own device and then you would give a declaration, no, I have nothing, or I have, here's three things I have, and I'm not going to give you two because there's a privacy issue here and there's an argument about that. But that's in the first instance, so that's a good thing. I know you probably have a lot of questions.
Yes. How long do you have to hold on to a public record? In other words, say, you as a company or us, how long do we have to? Is it five years, seven years, or forever?
I'll just tell you that cities cannot delete things that are less than two years. As a special district, we don't have that same limitation. So without the retention schedule, and without that word, depending on the nature of the presentation, we have... We retain... Delete it. And we, as of right now, I think we're gonna, that's probably going to be the answer.
Okay. Then if it's a private, like the iPhone, no one has to give that up? Or...
If it hasn't been filled with public records, you would...
Okay, it's just this other...
So if you believe that the person asked, so Nolani asked me, you know, do I have any public records? And I say no. And someone, the party asking for the public records, believes that's not truthful, then they could actually eventually get my personal devices and check it out.
I think you would have worked to say, you would say no, and then the person who wanted challenge that, if I know that you challenged you, and then you, another person that said something, and then you, you didn't believe it.
Yeah.
But who was asking? And then there's this private declaration saying, we believe he does have it. And then if he leaves it up there, and maybe the court could say, you can turn over your device, and they look at the changes, which nobody else does, and I'll return it.
Right.
But there has to be something on the other side, because basically they're going to accept what they say. Only you know the time of the last.
What's the penalty if he does get challenged, or if we get challenged and we really, but we lied? I mean, there's got to be some, I mean, I would say probably the, you'd have to vacate your office, you'd have to pay civil... Have they turned it?
No, I suppose possibly turn it back to, if I have to say, the public record, that does apply to the individual, so you could use whatever action. And of course, these are limited, you know, the client, strong public record, only you can turn it over.
I have a couple questions. When you send us district information confidential, does that apply? Would you have to turn that over to?
No, it's about attorney communication. It's an own record. But it's protected by the attorney-client privilege. So we've identified that communication was protected. By the attorney-client privilege. And that's one of the strongest privileges there are, and you would almost never...
Okay, then you made a comment. Some items are a two-year retention schedule. Then you said, you know, you didn't even define what the retention schedule is for everything. You know, is there a retention schedule for six years, seven years, five months?
We have a district retention schedule, and you have the office. It's many different, depending on the type of office, or how long the other people... So that would be one of the parts of your service.
And you know what that amount of time is?
Well, it's again, when that document is, I mean, it's, it's not a simple document, so, you know, the room is not going to matter.
Alan, in my case, one of my contradictions has been the fact that I receive communications through my company-issued computer. My emails come to my company-issued computer. Could my company stop someone from requesting a PRA, or are they subject, is my company subject to the same things I'm subjected to? You know?
I'm sure they might want to hear from you, and say, with a care of all of these, who I, that you got to disclose, that we think from, like, the privacy, and things like that, or you could assert that you have any company, also, can have these things to be turned in.
Well, I keep a separate email folder, for example, for sanitary district business, and SDRMA business, and whatever else. I would still be forced to give up that, but I wouldn't be forced to give up other emails that had no relationship to my office.
I'm assuming the, the declaration, you don't make it explain all that, the court would say, for anything, they would accept, I'm assuming they would accept that, and they would say, if you separate, you, you, I said, for you, to challenge, by your side, or something, you guys have, if they actually, you know, fully do, and then you, your life, personality, then that's a question, so, definitely have that communication, you change it, and then, nobody else is going to change it.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to have a million of them.
And my company probably wouldn't be very happy about that. They're a little, you know.
Other questions for Alan? Okay? Scott, you want to move on?
So if we go down, no, thank, thank you, Alan. So we go to D two now. And so after those considerations that District Councils mentioned to you, you have some options to comply with this new decision. One of those options before you is to acquire tablets, and we recommend the Microsoft Surface Pro. So all your communications will be on those tablets, and you would carry those tablets with you wherever you go, you know? So that's one option. To buy those tablets, as you see in your staff reports, about twelve thousand dollars. If you don't want to spend that, twelve thousand dollars, and you don't want to be responsible for the tablets, then the other option is, is what District Council Burns mentioned, is that, you know, we get a PRA, and District Clerk Minway asks you, do you have any public documents on your cell phone? And you say, no, and that's it, and we move forward, and go from there. So that's another option you could do, so.
Is there an option that if, is the option, do all five of us have to accept this, or can two or three of us?
Sure, yeah. It's up to, yeah, not all five, not just one of you, two of you want to have a tablet, that's fine, too.
Out of curiosity, if you were to call one of us, or we call you, who's supposed to be on the tablet?
Well, no, the tablet is just for emailing.
Just for-
Yeah, for calling, you still use your cell phone, but for when I'm sending, like, your weekly updates, or when I'm sending emails to you, it goes to your tablet.
Oh, so-
It goes to your CMSD email, not your personal email.
And that would be CMSD email that we currently have, and to utilize for the service-
Right, right.
What about texting? That's the same thing?
No, texting will be in, in your phone, so, I mean, so this is, but that, again, but that can still be subject to a PRA, so, so you don't want to, if it's, if it's a business, if you're, if you want to talk to me on business, don't text me, use, use the tablet, or, or call me.
Um, I haven't, I haven't recently reviewed the public records, well, the retention schedule, the records retention schedule. I went through it at Orange County San District, and, you know, mainly to get rid of the more voluminous, like, the operations data. I mean, five years is enough time. There was a schedule with twenty-five different types of data. Can I, could we defer this until I get a chance to review the public records?
Sure.
The retention schedule, is it, is it online?
It's, it's our drive, if you have it, and it's all the board's, I mean, reviewing it and advising it by your department, and then once it's your fault, it's approved, and then you can go forward.
Well, the board ends up approving, reapproving it. I'd, I'd just like to see the old, review the old one, I haven't gone back and done that for a while.
So you want to hold this action until you review it, get it ready?
I think so. Give me an idea about what records staff have thought, what, how long we should retain them, and what they are.
I, I think, respectfully, I disagree. I, in fact, I'm, I'm going to move that we go forward with the staff recommendation on this, because I, I think that it's getting to the point where I don't want my phone involved, I don't want my computer at work involved, I don't want my stuff at home involved. You can always opt out if, after you review the retention schedule. In fact, I think part of my motion would be to poll the board as to who wants to go forward with this program, and then if somebody else wants to join in later, then purchase them then.
Okay.
If that's, is Alan, is that, is that reasonable? Like, gives you the opportunity to do what you need to do, and-
Yeah.
Bob, this proposal is just to purchase the tablets, not for the retention schedule. That could be-
I know. I, I'm, I'm just interested in reviewing what records have been assigned to have a, a retention schedule. If, Scott, you said something like your month, your, your weekly report, you think that would be subject to public records requests?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
But, you know, there's ten of us that have that. I mean, the board members get it, and certain other staff probably get it.
No, just you, just the board members.
Okay, but that would be available-
Yeah, if someone wanted to see a public, absolutely. If someone wanted to make a press, a weekly, my week update to you, absolutely, that's a, it's a public document.
So, I mean, I, you know, I don't see any sense for me to have one of these devices, because what I would get normally, it'd be on all of our devices.
I know, but it wouldn't go to your personal computer, that's what's going to go to this instead.
Yeah, I know.
I've got a question.
So, so when, let me ask you, so if it went to my personal computer, all I'd have to do is say, you know, this is what I have.
And some part of this study is going to be, may not, we may have to decide tonight, but of all of our communications, not going to be on the official CMSD email, because not especially, then, like, the person, the personal one, but who was, or, that chance of getting a note of key on the personal one, so, we'd have to change the way we do this in cases, going forward, so that-
I, I agree, Alan.
Start checking the CMSDs, you know, all the time.
For those of us that decide to use this program, there is a culture change, we're going to, it'll have to come just for CMSD, CMSD email. That's what Bob's getting at.
So the Hotmail, I get it through Hotmail, I-
And I get it through StateBump.com.
Yeah.
I got one other question. Okay, because you notice, I noticed here that it's only two other staff members, shouldn't it be three? Because usually, I get Nolani, yourself, and sometimes Gina.
Well, all the staff will be able to email us on-
I know, but they're going to have individual, individual ones, that's what I'm saying. It's not going to come from their computer, but, or, I mean, it's going to have to come from the little computer, little, little ones, right?
Well, maybe it would be a hot-
Oh, can you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, who would be the other two staff members that would get those?
Uh, myself and Nolani. So like, when, if I'm, so we go, usually, for traveling purposes, if we're traveling, so we can use the, the tablet for, for business.
Yeah, so I thought maybe Gina might fall into that same-
Well, I, in all honesty, you know, my, my tablet, I'd make it available to staff.
Okay, so this doesn't be a personal one, this would be one of the-
Correct.
All right, then I, again, I'm going to move that we go with the staff recommendation, but that would give the option of each board member opting into the program or not.
I'll second. Question? Is this something pressed, can, uh, the, if they look at it, or?
They can use PRA.
They could say, you know, can I see your records?
Sure, sure, got to early.
Without the-
Well, they have to do a PRA, they have to do an official PRA.
Okay. Okay. One last question.
Other discussion?
So we would be getting one, that would be, we take home this, and use that for district business.
Right. And like I said before, we're going to have to have some training sessions to work this-
Yeah.
Is this the size that they do?
They look at you.
It's a little bit bigger?
A little bit bigger than this. I'd like to-
Do we have insurance on these?
Insurance is, you know, if you're watching a TV opera, or whatever, they can prepare and provide other plans.
Do you think one of us could drop one?
What, what about-
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I, say, there's nothing, I don't-
Don't, don't qualify, don't qualify, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Do you have to have Wi-Fi access to make it work, or not?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're traveling, in your car or something, and you don't have Wi-Fi, it's not going to work, right?
It's in the Chevy.
You'll, you'll have, whatever you download, an email, and, or documents, and things like that, that you could always use-
Yes.
-on your phone, but if you want to update your email, if you got it, and you want to, you have to get it Wi-Fi.
They don't have air, air usage?
You know, I may not say enough about this, it's a Wi-Fi only, uh, to actually get a package where you guys can, you know, like, you know, some, it's just, so, we're, I do, I do, I do, I do, I work for you, and so, it's really-
Okay. Would, would these items be coming under the new budget for next year?
Now, staff, is there a question, if I can, if I can, um-
I believe so.
Can I, I have something, it's, you have a laptop, all your personal phones-
Of a hotspot.
Yeah, okay, the personal hotspot.
Right.
And which is, is, is-
Right.
-your phone, and you-
I haven't, I haven't got some, I saw that too, a while back, and I thought, what the heck is that? And my granddaughter told me what it was, so.
You and I could use it, too. I know you're going to be on table.
Your motion, don't you have to say a price?
To accept the staff report.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody, it's Alan, that's very helpful, very good discussion, I'm sure.
I know, we all do.
Okay, Rob, I think we're finally back to you.
Thank you. I want to, the, 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 You have to really approach that third, this, this, you know, with, with, uh, board of directors, you have to report man and, and, and their, their president and the manager.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't on the list, but I just didn't know if, uh, we were going to address it.
It was not on the ad hoc committee's list of pump stations, I believe, that we always add.
So I don't know what's the question.
We just have to wait and see.
We'd see what we got.
We have to do the other ones first.
Yeah, and once we do the other ones, then we, we'll put that on the list.
Yeah, I'm sure they could come up with something good.
I just thought this was important.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting, I was coming up Harbor Boulevard today, at, at Harbor and Wilson, they have, the city has a, you know, the ones that they do, right on the corner. And you know what's on it? Pizza. And it says Papa John's Pizza, they, but the city must have allowed Papa John's to wrap that.
I know, you think so, he may have done it for himself.
Or Papa John's did it on their own, who knows? But I thought.
I wouldn't think the city could do that.
It's probably not something we'd go for. Okay, thank you, Rob. Oh, um, thank you, Rob. Then we need a, a motion to accept the, uh.
And I second it, I, I think Bob maybe, and I second it.
Yeah, I'm moving.
And I second it.
Is that correct? Or was I? All those in favor?
You were, you were deleting things from your phone.
Yes, deleting things from my phone. Motion carries five to zero for the recommendation. Thanks, Rob. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, uh, this is your quarterly review of the investment report. As of March thirty first, the portfolio was earning one point three four eight percent, uh, with a duration of nine hundred and twenty seven days, that's about two and a half years of time. Uh, you have a requirement that, uh, at least twenty percent of the portfolio must mature, uh, within, um, uh, six months, I'm sorry, must mature within one year. And at March thirty first, we were sitting at thirty one, uh, and a third percent that was going to, uh, mature within, uh, the one-year timeframe. Uh, year to date, uh, the portfolio is earning one point two seven percent, uh, and it was budgeted to earn zero point nine percent, so we're a little bit ahead of, um, ahead of budget. All that's really attributable to, to rate increases that have happened over the last, um, uh, several months and our, uh, uh, our portfolio, uh, as a result of that, has gone, uh, up with, we've been able to reinvest funds when maturities had happened to be able to ride that a little bit. We are to the point where we're seeing some investments that are not being called, we haven't had that in a long time, but in, in times when interest rates rise, um, uh, the issuers, uh, don't call those investments back and we're gonna withhold those, which is perfectly fine when we make those investments, it's our intention to, to hold those investments, um, uh, to maturity. We did have one investment that matured during the month of, uh, March, that was a negotiable certificate of deposit with Sterling Bank, uh, it was just a six-month investment that earning zero point six five percent, uh, at two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We, uh, reinvested that, uh, the end of the month, uh, into a federal home loan bank, five-year note earning two point two four percent. We are starting to see in those five-year timeframe, we're starting to see the two percent securities come back at pretty regular basis, which is, um, uh, which is kinda nice. Uh, with that, I'm available for any questions you may have, and if there are no questions, then we just need, uh, action to approve the investment report.
Post-election, up, it hasn't come down yet, has it?
Um, for what, for what we're seeing though, the, the Trump bump is still there.
Yeah, I, I, it's interesting, normally by the hundred-day mark, which I think is coming up, it starts to dip a little bit, it hasn't dipped much at all.
No, we haven't seen that.
I'm with approval of the investment report.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Alan, you had another item, item two?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a report on the general managers' agreement for the next year. It's, uh, the only, only, uh, change to the agreement is it's an increase in his annual compensation by. It just went off the screen. Right when the punchline was coming. It's a half a percent, it's nine hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, thank you, Wendy. And the reason I'm reporting on this is this is a new law change that you can no longer approve your executive's compensation on a, uh, consent calendar or without proceeding the approval of the agreement without an oral report, proceeding with the action on the contract. So that's what this was about.
Any questions for you, Alan, or anything? It's good. Motion?
Move, move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Director Pram, second by Secretary. Shinkin, thanks for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Is it in the red folder this night? Okay, I thought I didn't see it. All right, um, let's go to a local meeting, Jim, San Diego?
Yeah, last night I was at the Orange County Sanitation District meeting and two issues were kind of predominant. First being, um, O- OCTA, uh, has five, or, or, Orange County Sanitation District has, OCTA has five of their directors, uh, on, on our board. So it creates, um, uh, conflict of interest, you know, and in some circumstances. And it just so happens that, you know, O- O- OCTA is, and, and I'm sure you're all aware of it, that they're, they're making us, um, put a new entrance in. And, I mean, this, the, the significance of this project is, it's like, what, four hundred million? Something, it was something like that.
The whole project, yeah.
Yeah, the whole project. Uh, I mean, this is gonna cause problems for eight, nine years, I mean, uh, so, two issues, one, uh, they, they debated whether they should reduce themselves, uh, you know, from, uh, our, our board. And, uh, we really didn't come up with an answer to that, I mean, they're, they're just gonna, kinda play it by ear, but it could work in the, in the Orange County Sanitation District's favor, really, because, uh, those guys will, you know, uh, those guys will educate the other people on the OCTA and, and go to bat for us, we think. I mean, I'm pretty sure, uh, uh, so there's, there's that, and then, uh, uh, you, the whole, the, the whole project is, is this, is so overwhelming, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, Bob, what did you think?
Yeah, the, the real.
It's so overwhelming, I don't know how the hell they're gonna do it all, I mean.
Yeah.
It's really displacing, uh, our, our whole site. And, you know, obviously, uh, OCTA has to, uh, be responsible for the transportation and, and have the freeway, uh, you know, the right way, but it, it's blowing, it's blowing us out and, and we, we, we don't have that many, uh, solutions to it. So it, it's gonna be interesting to see how it develops and it's gonna get, I think it's gonna get, in fact, OCTA, uh, served us with a preliminary eminent domain, uh, yeah.
Whoa.
So they're, they're playing hardball right out of the chute and, and, uh, you know, it's, of course, we, we got our guns loaded too.
How does this, didn't Caltrans have any guarantee? OCTA is more authoritative?
I don't know that relationship, I, I mean.
Well, yeah, I, it, it, Caltrans is helping sports project, but it's OCTA's, uh, measure M's fund.
Yeah, the measure M's.
And then, and there's a, the reason, part of the reason I think for the eminent domain is, is it, there is going to be a, um, an on-ramp over the corner of the.
It's an overpass, it's, it goes right over the river, right by your.
I know, I know.
And I think there's gonna be an art rap on it.
That'd be nice.
Well, didn't the attorney say that they had a council of commissioners kind of by them, Bobby?
Well, the, the policy change was, um, to encourage the directors, um.
To educate the.
Yeah, and, and to not sit on both boards.
Yeah, but not.
I mean, not, if they're gonna sit.
Deliberate on both.
They have to make it, they, they need to make a choice about whether they're gonna listen to the Orange County Sanitation District processes in full, in open and or closed session. Or they're gonna, um, listen to the OCTA processes and there's gonna be negotiations, like Jim said, there's a lot of impact, so there's gonna be negotiations back and forth. And, and for a director to know what the position is in one agency, you can't help but influence, not, you know, just not the education part, but the money part.
So those five, those five OCTA board members knew that they were gonna do the eminent domain and they're sitting.
Well, I, I'm assuming that they, they must have known that.
Well, but they.
Well, it hasn't really, it's just the first step in eminent domain.
Yeah, but, but the process, the process is, you know, there's gonna be a lot of money negotiated for, even if the eminent domain goes through, needs to go through, you know, that still is a payment.
Compensated, uh, somehow, but.
I assume there'll be public hearings on all this?
Yeah, well, there will be, but the, um, so those five directors all chose, I think, I saw, I think I saw all five of them leave.
They did.
And not sit in on the closed session part of it, you know, I left and, and Michelle Steele and others who'd sit on OCTA, Kim Shaw, or whatever his name is. They all left, because they wanted to sit on the OCTA part of it.
They have a team though, of fourteen attorneys. Yeah, that specialize in every phase of this process. And we got like, what, three or four?
Well, there, there were two of them.
We got the elephant gun loaded, but we don't have anybody to pull the trigger.
Well, there were two of them, there were two of them there last night.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, but, yeah, we'll look, we'll follow that, 'cause it's gonna, it's gonna get interesting.
That's a long process, though, because you have to have yourselves, and you have to sit on each board, or?
But in open session, the board did vote that those directors have to make a choice which, which they attend and they, most of them decided they go to the OCTA part of it.
They all should.
Well, I, you know, I didn't count how many left. I only know a few.
So they don't know what's your closed session about?
Yeah.
Let me ask you. That's it. Okay.
No, no SARC meeting this month.
Uh, ISDOC, um, you had a report on the ISDOC executive committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, then I'll, got something else I wanted to talk about, um. There's a report that, uh, apparently, the majority of LAFCO districts in the state do not allow special districts to sit on their LAFCO boards. So AB nine seventy-nine is apparently gonna correct that, or if correct's the right word. Report on the program for June, the June quarterly meeting, there was some discussion about Eric Sapperstein, can I say that right?
Yeah.
And he's not available, or no, he is available, but he wants a fortune to come out and speak. Yeah, and he was just at a meeting at.
I saw him not long ago.
Yeah, so they, so they're looking for a second, somebody else. Um, there was some discussion about Orange County Sanitation District, apparently they're only an associate member of ISDOC, so they only pay twenty-five dollars a year. And they're trying to get OCSB to be a full member and pay more, so that may come to you. Um, probably the, the big thing was, uh, we had to end the meeting early because of some lengthy discussions by our leadership of the ISDOC. And there was another meeting in that same room at nine o'clock, so we kinda got booted out. But the big discussion, and I'll tell you right now, um, last, a couple of days ago, we all received an email from Leslie Keen, who's the secretary of ISDOC, and she's resigned her position, um, citing differences between herself and Mr. Fissler. And what it's, what it's stemmed, what it's coming from is that, under new guidelines, uh, Leslie's been recommending that, that ISDOC file a nonprofit status if we don't wanna pay taxes. If you don't have nonprofit status, then you, you pay taxes. And she and Director Fissler have been arguing about that for several months now. Uh, and the bottom line is you don't have to be a five oh one C three to be a nonprofit. There are a number of C categories, including a C six, that an association can file for and it exempts them tax, federal state tax. But you have to do filings with the state and the feds to get this stat. You have to be registered as a nonprofit corporation. Anyway, long story short, um, President Fissler basically told us that he would take care of it and that he would come up with a grand plan and everybody would be, would be real happy, and that was three months ago. Um, pretty contentious, and then I found out the other day that apparently there was an ad hoc committee meeting held the other day at ISDOC Ad hoc Bylaw Committee. And as an executive board member, I was never told there was gonna be any ad hoc committee. Essentially, Fissler told Leslie to quit telling the districts that we were not being in compliance with the law. And she had done that, she had sent out a memo saying, hey, we're not compliant with new laws and we're gonna have to get this bylaw changed, get filed as a nonprofit. And President Fissler basically told her to stop, quit doing what she was doing as secretary and federal testing. Personally, I'm of the mind that if ISDOC is gonna continue down this road of, of not being compliant and possibly breaking laws, I don't want this district to be part of ISDOC. And I, I know that's a grievous thing to say, that we pull out of ISDOC, but if they're not being compliant, if, if, if the leadership of ISDOC continues to not wanna be compliant, I don't wanna be part of that. So I just, I'm just throwing that out there for, as food for thought, that, hey, once they become compliant, maybe we rejoin ISDOC, but I don't think we're gonna be the only district that has that.
Well, who, who, who has determined that they are, are or are not compliant?
The attorney from MODOC.
And when will that occur?
It's already occurred.
And then, and they've determined that they're not compliant?
The, the, the attorney from MODOC, Metro, Municipal Water District, Orange County, had recommended these bylaw changes. And President Fissler keeps meeting with this attorney and they're not coming up with anything. Jim is, he basically blamed previous presidents of ISDOC for not taking care of this. Well, the problem didn't come up until recently, and I know the most immediate past president of ISDOC had no idea of this situation, so. Um, I, I'm just a little queasy about being part of an organization that's not being compliant with, with things, so, just some food for thought, I'm not advocating we rip out our membership from ISDOC right now, but I think it's something we need to keep an eye.
Well, let's see, executive directorship.
Heather?
No, no.
There is no executive.
Who am I thinking of?
The ISDOC?
Why, I'm thinking of LAFCO.
You're thinking of LAFCO, yeah.
I think we should put this on the agenda for a discussion at the next, at the study session or the board meeting.
Okay, I, I, well, we have an executive committee meeting next Tuesday, and supposedly, again, if this all gets ironed out and, and they do the proper filings and everything, then I think it goes away.
Cause you, tonight we're just discussing.
I'm just, I'm not, I don't want, I'm just bringing it up.
We should do it in a formal manner.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up under my ISDOC report, if, if we wanna talk about this at a study session, Scott, maybe, just, and, and hopefully the study session will say, hey, it's all been taken care of, so.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think that we don't wanna be part of it if it's, they're not complying with the law, 'cause that puts us in jeopardy.
It could put, it could put every district in jeopardy with, I guess, Alan, with tax, I mean, we could all be responsible for something.
What's the makeup of that board, I mean?
Currently, it's, uh, president is, is Fissler, um, first vice president is Sandra Jacobs from Santa Margarita, second vice president is Mark Monen from El Toro, Mary Ellen Mathis from IRWD, uh, Joan Finnegan's treasurer, and there is a current opening for secretary, obviously, that'll be handled next Tuesday, uh, executive committee.
LAFCO has, um, are they the, are they the agency that, well, they're the agency that, uh, that recommends or approves the special district representatives to LAFCO?
Well, the membership of ISDOC.
Yeah.
Determines who the representative is.
Yeah, but until we're not in that, we wouldn't be able to be a part of that.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowed to have one of our members be put on LAFCO.
And we wouldn't, and we wouldn't be, be, to, uh, listen to the candidates or, or the, our votes on it.
Well, even it's more interesting because, uh, the chair of ISDOC is also on LAFCO.
As, as a non-voting member also. So anyway, I just, I, I think you all need to be aware of what's going on, it, it's gotten pretty.
If we have a study session, indeed, and it's on the agenda, then we can, you can give us more information, and see where that, out of that.
I can have a meeting, yeah.
And, and Arlene's there, so yeah.
That's my recommendation.
All right, so Scott, if you wanna just, and then if that changes Tuesday, we can adjust. All right, um, Arlene, CSDA?
CSDA, uh, all of you know about March Day, Legislation Day coming up, and so, you know, the ones who are going, and me, I'm also, and, uh, it should be good, because, uh, we got, um, some, uh, good speakers and, uh, everything sounds good, we also have a, a chapter, uh, doing, which I'll be going to, um, and have that, the chapter doing, uh, all the different, uh, special districts who have a role to, you know, um, to executive board, we're going, uh, we asked, as a board, to volunteer. And, uh, I see, I'm, I'm chair of the membership committee for CSDA, so, uh, that was March thirtieth, and, uh, we're doing really, really good on retentions and, um, trial memberships, um, the committee, you know, has about twenty people on it, and, uh, boy, you know, really effective, that, we went down the list and everybody said, I'll take this one, I'll take that one, to make sure on the membership to convince people, they have a trial membership for ninety days, and at each time, you either have to pop in or out on this, and so we're gonna see what happens on that. Um, the participation is really good, um, let's see, actually, I won't believe with any one of that, I'm, uh, CSDA board, I had a board meeting just the other day, last Friday, and, uh, we, um, planning to have our president back, since he's had pneumonia, been in the hospital, and very bad, so it was really, it was kinda scary, but he's now back and, and trying to, uh, go through everything, getting ready for one hour, which would be coming up.
He's better than Solon is, yeah?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
He's, he's really a good man, and as far as running the meeting, he really runs it very well, too. Um, um, let's see. And, yes, oh, at that meeting, uh, most of you have not been in the office before, I know my guests, and it's, our office, CSDA, has little, um, what do you call them, cutting walls, you know?
What station?
Station, so, like, but the thing is, when people are on the phone, you know, you're just subject to everything that's around you, so we just, um, gave, uh, permission to go ahead and rebuild that whole area there.
Cool.
And make little offices into it.
Does your landlord know about it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And we went by that first.
That would be SDRMA in case you.
Yes, I know, I know, yeah, it's okay, I'm not telling anything out of school. And, and we're paying for it, and he's blessing us, so it's, it's fine, so it's, sounds okay. And then also, this is a time when we nominate different people for CSDA, um, for the, uh, awards that take place in Monterey, and so, at this time, I would like to nominate again, Mike Shinkin, and, uh, the reason why, because, you know, he has sat on ISDOC board for four years, two different terms, he's on SDRMA, he's very, and why, he's with us.
I'll second that.
Would you like to touch me?
And so I feel that, uh, the timing's good, and then, you know, his resume, to me, is fantastic, and I would be glad to work with Scott.
Didn't we nominate months before?
Yeah.
And did he win?
No. But that doesn't matter.
The minister, the minister won.
So it's just a matter of changing the date.
I'll work with Scott on that. We'll just, we'll just bring it up.
Pump it up, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll just bring it up a lot, anyway.
Read the ones that have won, to find out what the hell you need to do.
Thank you, I would like to.
Hopefully you will support it.
Well, they'll have to sit closer to the podium if you win.
Yeah, um, I was gonna, I'm not bringing this up because of what you said, but also last month, um, there's something called the Alliance Executive Council, which is SDRMA, CSDA, and the Special District Leadership Foundation, is it? And they elected me chairman of the Alliance Executive Council.
Good, I could be added to that, instead of the date, we add that too.
Make sure that's, make sure that's added in there, would you?
And I sit on it, too.
Yeah, we're both on the alliance.
That's good, so, anyway, to call for the question?
We don't need a vote on that, you and Scott can vote on that. We don't need a vote on that?
Yes, we do. Do you have to sign?
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Well, we don't, it's not an agenda item.
No, I, it's under me for CSDA.
We don't need a motion in a second to do that.
What do you think?
Because of this, what does it do?
As soon as we can.
Nomination by the board?
Yeah.
Now, with, it's nomination by the board and that would require action.
Sure.
It's not on the agenda and.
If it's not on the agenda, then you bring up a non-agenda item.
Yeah.
It's in your road, that's what it's-
It's under CSDA, I'll bring it up.
So it's a non-agenda item, it was a matter of urgency.
It's a matter of urgency, that's what I was getting at.
Right. And that's what Jim just said.
We pass that motion by Tuesday, board.
I, I make that motion that we found necessary to take that vote tonight because of urgency matters.
I'd second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay.
And then Arlene's motion was to nominate me for something, and-
I second it.
Director, or Vice President for him, and seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay.
That'd be great.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Very much, yeah, okay.
I hope no, I hope no ministers run against me.
I'm almost done.
Go.
So, then, we have now a new packet out, it's called Brown Act Compliance Manual, and our membership group just put it together. It's really good, it's really worth reading. Um, I don't know how to get your copies, um, maybe you can send it to-
They were supposed to be, you didn't get, hey, so you didn't get that one yet?
No, it's brand new.
At the meeting I was at, they said that that was gonna be sent out to all, to all the districts.
Oh, okay.
One copy?
Because it's a-
Yeah, have the districts make copies for all of them.
It's a lot for me to carry on the plane, let me tell you. I have so much to carry now, but the agenda is so thick.
Well, if you wouldn't, if you quit carrying the food, they wouldn't.
We could take your coffee and give it to Scott, so you don't have to carry so much.
So, okay. Then also, there's a California Special District's, um, portfolio that has everything in it that you can think of, for anybody, for, this is membership, so if anybody, uh, ever has somebody that they wanna talk to and want to know anything about, we got it, okay? So, that's it.
That membership meeting was interesting, they, they had asked, 'cause I'm on that committee as well, they had asked, uh, if anybody would like, would contact districts that had either dropped out or whatever. And the one district in Orange County that dropped out of CSDA that really surprised me, I've already sent them an email and I haven't heard back, was Moulton, the Galwater District.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't know. I talked to Chris Palmer and he was gonna make some contacts, too, but-
That's amazing.
That's, that, yeah.
That's amazing.
Really was. Um, SDRMA, board meeting next week in Sacramento, so I'll report for you next month. And I think that, any other special meetings? Any else?
I think the, most of us attended that Waco meeting.
Oh, Waco, yeah.
And Greg Woodside was the presenter, he did a fabulous job-
Yes, yes.
-giving out the information about a property.
It was good.
Yeah, it was good.
There's more information I have never, that I haven't received in the past.
You know what's amazing about that, is he showed those diagrams about how high the dam is, and the water is-
They keep it down low.
Yeah.
For some reason.
I, they must, I mean, if, I guess if Seven Oaks ever broke, that would-
Yeah.
Well, it's, it, it's all based on flood control.
Yeah, yeah, the, the difference is, was amazing.
See, I, I didn't, I didn't realize that the Corps owns the dam and operates the dam.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Oh, really?
And then the Orange County Water District continues to work with them to try to get storage behind it.
Right.
To put water in the ground.
And they said the spillway will be finished in like, five years, that's what they're waiting for.
Okay, um, oral, there's no old business nor any new business, so we'll go to oral communications and comments, any directors having comments?
No, I, I continue to encourage, um, a strategic planning effort, um, towards meeting the 2020 seventy-five percent removal, even though it's based, you know, it's based on tonnage and, uh, there's many, I think, I think it's gonna be some difficulty for us. Orange County, well, when, when the OC recycling, OCC Recycling Center opens, you know, they're gonna take even more recyclables into that system, and we haven't gotten approval to use their numbers yet.
Yeah, we did, I thought we did, didn't we? Yeah, we did. We got approval for that. It's right now, it's like, a two percent.
So, so when, when, when will we begin to report their numbers on ours?
I assumed that would be a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Is it, is it on the website? Did it move the needle?
Two percent. Just two percent, right?
So, so the number's very tiny.
Yeah, while you're talking about that, I was thinking, at the new OCC facility, are they gonna have organic area at all?
They have an historic-
Because I see all these trucks mowing grass, loaded with organics, that they could take them to OCC, dump them, if there's, you know, some type of, you know, and use that as, you know, another percent, maybe.
Well, the organics-
Your finance director just gave you a-
No?
They're, the, um, they, they, they collect oil for us, and they have historically collected Christmas trees, and I think that's the extent of their organics, histor- historically.
We may have to make a budget adjustment if that, if that happened.
I mean, would we, well, would, would we have to pay for it? Just a thought.
Yeah, we would.
Absolutely. Do all of you get this early college, high school, senior project presentations?
Uh-huh.
This is, uh, from, um, it's not like a continuation school, but, uh, Scott, do you get that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's an optional school that kids that don't fit the regular high school-
Right, right.
Or they, they, they can take-
Well, I guess they just up-
Accelerated class, right.
They really don't ask anything out of us.
Early college, yes.
It's more or less an update, right? Okay.
Yeah, Eric was gonna go to that, my son Eric, and he decided that there were more girls at Estancia, so he offed it out of it. I'm not kidding, that's what he said.
Oh, gee.
He told his mother.
At least he's got his priorities straight.
Well, plus they didn't have a baseball team at that school, so-
They have no athletics.
Yeah.
Also, none of us talked about the Leahson meeting we had, you know, this last one, where we invited the high, uh, the school district-
Well, we talked about it last month.
Oh, you did, that's right.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
You weren't here last month.
Right, was I?
No, you were gone.
Oh, I was in Sacramento, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed it in the pros and cons.
I was just gonna comment, are we going to be having a school district now come into our?
I don't know, you might wanna talk to Councilmember Stevens about that one.
Hmm.
That was more than we expected, I think.
I think, I think it's still gonna be a valuable tool.
With Vicki.
Yeah.
It was an hour and longer.
I know, but I think it could be a valuable asset.
I, I-
Oh, sure, sure.
I think, I think once they get the idea of what we're doing there, maybe-
Yeah.
But the discussion was, the discussion was important.
It sure was.
They had important issues to talk about.
They got more, they got more out of it than we got out of it with their presentation.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and the Mesa, Mesa then had to talk about their, their potential lead issues in, in the residences and the schools.
Yeah.
Because the school district was there.
Okay, nice.
I was gonna bring up about the pizza box, but we already did that.
Oh, I'm, I am researching, um, you know, what filters will take lead out of the residential, my, you know, my home use. I have a Brita filter and it doesn't remove asbestos, it doesn't remove lead, and a few other things that are potential, you know, in our water supplies.
Brita?